Call to orders, City of Forest Park, public hearing. The purpose of the hearing is to develop a list of housing and community development needs for the City of Forest Park and to discuss and prioritize appropriate projects to meet those needs. That's community development, Mr. Burns, I guess you and Mr. Anderson.
Yes, this is a typical public hearing that we would have every year on the said funds. And, you know, we've got a larger crowd than we typically do. So, Chris, with that, why don't you go ahead and present the findings this year and any options that we might have from staff?
Thank you, Councilman Burns. As you mentioned, this is community development block grant, which is federal aid to local communities and chiefly for the benefit of low and moderate income persons and the elimination of slum and blight conditions. The money that we are eligible to apply for is actually channeled through the county because Hamilton County is considered an urban county. And then there are, and they receive a fixed amount per year that they then need to decide how to distribute among local communities. The City of Cincinnati is excluded from that because they get their own direct grant due to the size of the city, but all other local communities in Hamilton County go through this process if they want to apply for CDBG funds. The purpose of the hearing tonight is to develop a list of needs so that we can then use that to formulate an application for one or more projects. I'll note that there's another meeting scheduled for October 20th, two weeks from tonight, also at 7:45, and that is to present that list and to rank the projects if we have more than one. I'll just very quickly go over what the eligible activities are for CDBG because not everything that we might want is eligible. But we can use CDBG funds to acquire real property, to, it's known as disposition, to manage or dispose of property. We can do it for public facilities and improvements, but we have to, on that one, show that there is a benefit to our low and moderate income population. And I should mention, low and moderate means 80% of the median income for Hamilton County, and it's scaled by family size. So for a family of four, currently, that income threshold is $57,000. So we're, you know, it does encompass moderate income. It doesn't mean that it's only the very poor that would be eligible. Moving on, clearance and remediation activities, and that would be activities related to demolition or cleanup of property. Provision of public services, again, this one is limited to services that would benefit low and moderate income people. What's known as interim assistance, and that, from what I can see, has been chiefly used, say, following an emergency or disaster where there needs to be interim cleanup before more permanent measures are taken. And then a few more that are actually not very common. One is payment of a non-federal share of a federal grant. So we could potentially use CDBG funds to help fund a match for another federal grant if we were applying for one. Relocation, and that would be if we needed to relocate any person or family under the Uniform Relocation Act. Loss of rental income, and that would also be related to, say, if we were purchasing a rental property and that person had a claim of loss of rental income. Housing services, which would be, again, for the benefit of low and moderate income people. Privately owned utilities, this is a development-related item where those monies could be used to, say, extend water or sewer lines or electric or phone. Construction of housing, again, that would be of the low-income eligible or assisted type of housing. And then homeownership assistance. That's actually something that we have done for a number of years with our small repair program. Just a final thing that I'll say in orienting everyone to this is to just name a couple of things that we've done with our CDBG allocations in the past 10 to 15 years. Those include the partially funding the construction of the senior center, funding the expansion of the senior center parking lot, partially funding the paving of Halesworth Drive, and our small repair program for homeowners. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but otherwise, the floor is to others to develop the list.
Any questions for Mr. Anderson and/or Mr. Burns?
Yeah, I think, Chris, you know, we do have a, I think, somewhat of a strong need to look at some of our residential streets that, just as we did with Halesworth in years past. You know, I would urge the staff to really look at opportunities, if we haven't already, where we could apply that, this grant, to some of our residential streets. There are some that may qualify based on the, I know you have an equation that you have to apply, so...
Anything else from anybody else? Anything at all? Anything from the public on this issue?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
City manager did ask me to mention a couple of projects that he had identified. We're not 100% sure that these would be on the final list because we have to check on eligibility, but they include the plaza area out front between this building and the police department, which needs to be resurfaced. The tennis courts, which are in need of rehab and which we have some other funding through the schools that we could pair with that. And then playground equipment, which is also, I think, on our capital budget and could be an eligible activity.
Anything else from anybody else? Mr. Smith, anything on that? Hearing none. Do all the bids before the public hearing. Declare the public hearing closed. We're about five minutes or less from the opening of the council meeting. Call to order, City of Forest Park, council meeting number 1236, October 6, 2014. If you would, let us stand for the pledge, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The clerk call the roll, please.
Burns?
Here.
Hoddle?
Here.
Herbie?
Here.
Holt?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Sethon?
Here.
Our president, could I have a motion to excuse the law director?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second that we excuse Mr. John Whitehoff, the law director. I would just announce that Mr. City Manager Hodges is not with us this evening, but Acting City Manager Ty Smith is present. Item number two, minutes, excuse me.
Do we have to vote on the motion?
Do we have to vote on the motion to excuse? Well, I don't think we have it to pass. We will, it's a roll, it's just a force vote anyway would be. All those in favor of the motion to excuse the law director, let it be known by the sign of voting aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Whitehoff is then excused. Item number two, everyone receive copies of the minutes, are there any questions or additions, any changes or additions to the minutes? Hearing nine, the minutes will stand approved as presented. Next item is item number three. There would be presentation, the first of those would be the September business of the month. Defender Security, Mr. Paul Brown.
Mayor, members of council, thank you very much. As all of you know, Defender Security is our September business of the month, and this is one of our business retention successes for the year. Defender is a diversified supplier of consumer services, including for companies that include ADT Security and several HVACC companies here in the area. The company operates in 40 states and has a large call center facility at 650 Northland Boulevard here in Forest Park. Defender employs 98 people full-time at this location, and due to an increase in the amount of business, company officials recently decided to expand the local operation, a move that will result in the creation of another 20 full-time jobs. Defender recently signed an extension of its lease at Northland Tower and made a significant investment to renovate that space, a project that will result in the retention or creation of more than 100 jobs with an annual payroll in excess of $4 million for the community. This is a significant project that, due to the competitive nature of the suburban office market, required our participation. There is a significant amount of vacant office space in the northwest quarter, as we all know. Consequently, Defender had a number of choices. However, their decision to remain in Forest Park demonstrates the value of operating a business here in our community. Defender has been a valuable member of our business community for many years, and I'm sure that everyone joins us in thanking the company for their ongoing commitment to Forest Park. With that, I'd like to invite the local office manager, Tisha Flores, come up and accept the award. Tisha.
City Forest Park, Business of the Month, Defender Security, and recognition of the company's contribution to the growth and development of the City of Forest Park. I present you with this plaque for your service. Thank you. If you have a word for us, please.
Yes, I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight and accept this on behalf of my company. We're excited, everything that's happening there, and appreciate the good business relationship, and we look forward to continuing that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next presentations would be industrial beautification awards. Councilman Hope, believe that's you, or is that me? Beautification.
That's me, but... Oh, isn't that... You got it up there?
These are the awards. Okay. This is the first one. Yeah.
Good evening. This award certificate goes to McDonald's Restaurant at 631 Northland Boulevard. I want to thank you for helping to keep City of Forest Park beautiful by putting flowers in at your place, at your business.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
All right.
Appreciate it, thank you. Michelle Bell is here for...
Yeah, she's at the...
She's standing for Debbie Sanders.
Again, this award goes to the McDonald's Restaurant at 2290 Way Cross. Again, the same to him, thank you so much for putting out flowers and helping to keep Forest Park beautiful as it is.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Is he on there? Or is he up? Oh, yeah. There's no name, just called the church.
This award goes out to Forest Chapel in Forest Park. Okay. Again, thanks very much for helping keep the City of Forest Park the beautiful city that it is.
Well, we do work on it.
All right, thank you.
It might be appropriate to say, in the last, well, I've been there since '66, and we have lost, I think, 29 trees over the period. We have seven and a half acres. And that, like, 29 trees we lost, I would like to thank Dave Buskin and company. I think he has chipped all 29 of them for us. And that is, there's three or four of us to take them down, but I don't eat trees for lunch. So, my, from the church, thank you to Dave Buskin and the chipper crew for work that they have done for 15, 20 years, I'm not sure. But it makes our, it makes it, taking them down is one thing, but cleaning them up, making them go away is the hard part, and thanks to Sewers Park for helping us out there.
Quite welcome. Thank you all.
Okay, at this point, we would have a motion. Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I would move to amend the agenda and take up at this time items C and D under new business, motions to appoint a candidate to council and the planning commission.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we amend the agenda and take up this, at this time, item C and D under new business, a motion to appoint a candidate to the council and to the planning commission. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing nine, would the clerk call the roll, please?
Burns?
Yes.
Hoddle?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Sethon?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. At this time, I would ask Mr. David Lives to come forward for, Mr. Lives is being reappointed to a seat that he vacated to finish out the expired, the term that will expire on November, that will expire at the next election, which would be, actually, the term would expire on November 30 of 15. By charter, following the charter, we will make this appointment with the concurrence of council. Mr. Lives, if you would raise your right hand and repeat after me.
Mr. Mayor?
We have to have a motion.
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to concur with the mayor's recommendation and appointment of Mr. David Lives for an unexpired term ending in 11/30/15.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we, that we, appointments, that the council concur with the mayor's appointment of Mr. David Lives, a member of council, for a term expiring 11/30/15. Is there any discussion? Hearing nine, is that roll call?
That motion can be a voice vote.
All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by the sign of voting aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now, that's the correct order. Mr. Lives, would you raise your right hand and repeat after me? Aye?
Aye.
State your name.
David Lives.
Do solemnly swear, affirm?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution?
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And the Constitution?
Constitution.
Of the state of Ohio?
State of Ohio.
The charter?
The charter.
Of the municipality?
Of the municipality.
Of Forest Park, Ohio.
Ohio.
And that I will faithfully?
That I will faithfully.
Honestly?
Honestly.
And impartially?
Impartially.
Discharge the duties?
Discharge the duties.
As a member of the Forest Park City Council?
As a member of the Forest Park City Council.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Just want to wait right there, you want to sit down and get back up?
I'll wait, that's all.
Okay. The next item would be item D, and that's a motion, Mr. Burns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would move to concur with the mayor's recommendation and appointment of Mr. Lives to the planning commission for an unexpired term ending 11/13/15.
11/30?
11/30/15, sorry.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we passed a motion to concur with the mayor's appointment, Mr. David Lives, to the planning commission for a term expiring 11/30/15. Is there any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by the sign of voting aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Lives, do this one more time, please. Raise your right hand, repeat after me. Aye, and state your name.
Aye, David Lives.
Do solemnly swear, affirm?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Ohio?
And the Constitution of the state of Ohio.
And the charter of the municipality of Forest Park?
And the charter of the municipality of Forest Park.
And that I will faithfully?
And I will faithfully.
Honestly?
Honestly.
And impartially?
Impartially.
Discharge the duties?
Discharge the duties.
As a member of the planning commission of the City of Forest Park?
As a member of the planning commission of Forest Park.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Congratulations, and you will take your seats.
Oh, yeah.
In the council, okay? Okay. We will now move to the next item on the agenda, which would be number four, communications from the public. This is a time for citizens to communicate on matters before council or to ask questions of concern to them. When recognized, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and then state your comments or questions. Council meetings are taped recorded for ease of transcriptions. Comments are limited to five minutes. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address the council? Would you come over to the podium, tell us who you are, and sign in, please?
My name is Demetrius Palmer. I live at 11031 Quail Ridge Court. I am a very concerned citizen because of the fact that, and I'm gonna be real, because I like to keep it real, and excuse, I live around a lot of young teenagers, and they like to be in gangs. It's a leader of a gang that I know, and it's getting bad. I have, and my son and I, yes, my son is 22, I am disabled, as you can see, I have a lot of health issues, so my son does stay with me for that reason. And I have been, we have been threatened, our lives have been threatened, from the incident that happened with the police officer last Wednesday. So my, our lives have been threatened ever since then. So the police have made their presence known just for one week, and I have to keep calling when something goes on. Like, if I see a girl fight go on in my neighborhood, I have to call. When they come out, they hear, when the kids, when they hear the sirens, these are young ki, these are high school, junior, these are high schools. These are high school kids I'm talking about. When they hear the sirens, they scatter. They scatter. And then they, the parents are antagonizing the fight. Then they post it on Facebook so the world can see. I've been called everything but a child of God. Been called a snitch, everything. And just Sunday, just yesterday, coming home from church, kids in the parking lot playing football. Of course, the football hits my car. The kids didn't know I was sitting in my car. Hits my car, damaged my car. Called the police. Police officer says something to the kids, "Don't do no good." They do it again. Hits my car again. Call for the officer, the same officer comes back out. Of course, the child, the kid threatens my son. They can't do nothing. They won't do anything. I need help. I need help. It's bad when I have to have my church members follow me home so that nothing happens to Just today, you know, there, two officers show up today. I didn't even call them. They just happened to come through in patrol. They see the kids in the street park tossing football, again, kids scattered. But of course, the kids are looking at me because they think I called. I'm just looking for help, some type of a help. They think they can run me out of my complex. I've been there two years. I've never had a problem. Now I got a problem. All I'm looking for is just maybe try to, you know, be, just try to get more officers or something, just to try to make their presence known out there. I'm scared. I'm literally scared. I don't even want to walk out to take my trash out. I'm scared to go out the front door. I got to look to see who's out there on the step before I can walk out to go to my car. And it shouldn't even have to be like that. It shouldn't, I shouldn't have to feel like that in my complex. You know, I'm just asking, maybe just to show, make their presence known more so. And it's after school. It's after school. When it, it's usually about 4 o'clock, 5 o'clock, when all this stuff happens. All I'm asking is just to make their presence known. That's it. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Let me, let me just say a few things. First of all, we, we've been aware for a long time of problems in that area. I know that our police patrols have been increased in that area. You know, I know of, obviously, I'm very aware of the incident last week and what happened and the why of it. I know that oftentimes, we have police who do come through there on more than our regular patrols. We have, we even have had police to come through there in our, on marked cars at various times. And I would agree that, you know, no one should have to live in fear. I will ask the acting city manager, I know Mr. Smith took all of the information, I will ask him to have conversations with the patrol sergeants as well as the lieutenants to see what, if anything, in addition, in addition that we can do. I can tell you, though, we, sometimes we get cooperation from the complex owner on some things, sometimes not, and sometimes we've made suggestions, sometimes they've been followed, sometimes not. I would hope that the complex owners would provide and offer more security than they do for that complex. But unfortunately, we can't force the owners to do that. We will do what we can do. You know, I'm not going to sit here and promise you things that I know we can't do, you know...
I understand.
We can't, we can't have police officers sitting there at all times. And unfortunately, the time of day you're talking about, it is generally at the end of the school day, between 3:30 and 5 o'clock. And for, I know the last couple of years, we have increased our police presence at and around locations at the high school, both mornings and afternoon, but at that time of day, in the afternoons especially, which basically takes away some of our patrol efforts from other areas for a short period of time.
Yes, yes.
But again, we will, the city manager will talk to the appropriate people in the police department to see if, if there are other things that we can, can do. But I will say this to you, don't stop calling. Whenever you see something happens, don't stop calling, because basically, that's one of the things that they want you to do, is not call. You know, if, if they can intimidate you enough so that, and when I'm saying you, I don't mean you necessarily personally, but anybody, when they can intimidate people and have those people to stop calling, that, you know, that they've won the battle. The other thing that we oftentimes ask people to do is, in addition to calling, and you're right, it's the same thing we get sometimes with, when we get reports of loud music. By the time we get there, the music is turned down. So by the time our officers show up, the crowd is, the people are dispersed. But a little different from the loud music, you know, almost everybody's got cell phones or whatever that have the capabilities of taking pictures. At least that would be a way that we know, we can identify who's doing what.
I've been trying to do that with my recorder. I have a cellphone. I've been trying to do that with my recorder, I have a cellphone and a tablet, and I've been trying to, you know, record stuff and everything, and
But, uh.
Excuse me, I've been trying to do all of that, and
And again, uh. Mr. Mr. Smith will talk to our police people. In addition, we might be, he may be able to talk also with our, our community officer to see if there are some other suggestions, ideas that this community police officer may be able to give you as well. But I want to thank you for coming, and I want, and I, I want to thank you also for being diligent and, and, and being concerned about what's going on in your community and in your neighborhood. That's, for, the more people get involved and become concerned, the less the problem will be. So again, I want to thank you for your effort.
Thank you for listening.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith.
Could you also leave us a phone number before we contact you?
Um, I did on here.
You got, you got it on there.
I did, I, I did, it's on here.
Fine, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Smith, anything else from the public?
None at this time.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, item number five, reports of standing committees. First of all, standing committee would be Community Development, Mr. Burns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have no report this evening, but I'd be willing to answer any questions if anyone may have.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Burns? Hearing none. Mr. Burns, for the work session on the 14th, I have one item for you, that's CDBG applications. Do you have any to add?
No, thank you.
Okay, the next committee reports, Law Committee, Councilwoman Cottle.
I have no reports this evening, thank you.
Any questions for Councilwoman Cottle? Hearing none, Councilwoman, I have, Councilwoman Cottle, I have one item on the agenda for you, it's the We Thrive Resolution. Do you have anything to add?
No, thanks.
Next reports, Human Resources, Councilwoman Holt.
I would just like to take everyone that came out to the Employee Volunteer Recognition Dinner. Again, staff did an outstanding job with putting this on for the, for the volunteers and employees. And we had Mr. Brim's, our own, his son rendered the music for us, and he was awesome, and he has a new CD that's coming out around the holiday. So you might want to check that out. He also has a webpage that you can check out. With that, again, thanks to the, to staff for service rendered. With that, it would conclude my report, thank you.
Any questions for Councilwoman Holt? Hearing none, Councilwoman Holt, I have no items on the agenda for you, do you have any to add?
No, I do not.
Next committee is Public Safety. Would either Councilwoman Holt or Councilman Southall have anything for Public Safety at this time?
No, I do not.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, I'm glad to see our chairperson back, but I'd like to, under Safety, I'd like to bring your attention to the, this is a time of the year where fires are increased, and we want to try to prevent as much of those as possible. But this particular one that I'm speaking of now has to do with clothes dryers for fire prevention. I'd just like to say real quickly that there's enormous amount of, like, 29,000, I'm sorry, 20, 2,900 clothes dryer fires throughout the USA, but getting back to your Forest Park, hopefully, we haven't had any recently that I know of, but, but we would like to highlight a couple of things that can be identified as preventions for, for anything that would be coming down the pike in that manner. For example, I'd like to identify maybe real quickly about seven different things. First of all, some of it will probably be something that people are already doing, but there's a couple items that I didn't know about, and maybe some other people didn't know about. But, but at any rate, cleaning the filter screen after each load prevents lint buildup. Stay home when the dryer is in use, that's something that I don't do, but I think that's something that's very important. Clean the vents outside twice a year to clean out any accumulated dust and lint. Vacuum the motor area of the unit. Do not dry damp head mops in the dryer. Keep the surrounding area, of course, clean. The dryer heat may ignite, I'm sorry, the dryer heat may ignite when you add, put in mop heads or things of that nature. And the last item is, you can always use the old fashioned clothesline, I thought that was gone out of, out of existence, but that can be very, very, very helpful in keeping down fires. That's the end of my report, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions for, any questions for Public Safety? Hearing none, on the agenda for the next meeting is the Fire Department overview for, that would be given by the chief and/or some representative from the department. The next standing committee is Public Improvement and Facilities, Mr. Southall.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, one item I'd like to identify under that particular category. Well, Park and Recreation, of course, did meet Wednesday, October the 1st, their normal monthly meetings. But the commission will be holding an annual, annual Fall Harvest Fest on Saturday, October the 18th, from 11:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. at the Senior Center. The children will decorate pumpkins, have costumes judged by the commissioners, and enjoy a magic show by Brett Sears. One other thing I'd like to mention is that the Home Depot Foundation, volunteers from the city and Home Depot will start a second phase of the revitalization project on Tuesday, October the 7th, starting at 8:00 a.m. at the Kemper Meadow Park. The shelter will be painted, the restroom stalls installed in both restrooms and the ADA compliant fixtures placed in the restrooms, and the concession stand at, at the shelter is being utilized this year by the girls soccer striker teams to raise funds for an outing at the end of the soccer season. That's the end of my report, Mr. Mayor, and I would entertain any questions anybody would have.
Any questions, Mr. Smith, comment?
Just one point for clarification. The Home Depot folks will not be doing painting tomorrow because of the weather forecast. They contacted us late this afternoon and let us know that, but they will try to do a lot of the interior work in the restrooms. And then we'll try to get the painting of the exterior of the building rescheduled for another date and time.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I have one comment, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Burns.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to really just recognize the Home Depot Foundation, because, you know, I was shortly involved with the previous effort, and, you know, you come out, the, the folks from Home Depot are very excited about what they do and the fact that they're contributing back to the community, and I think this relationship has, has really proven well for Forest Park. And I just wanted to really thank the foundation and all those who are volunteering alongside those foundation members during these efforts.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for public improvements? I have no items on the agenda for that committee for the 14th. Mr. Southall, do you have any to add?
Not at this time, sir, I do not.
Next committee report is Ways and Means Committee, Councilwoman Herbie.
Yes, I do want to mention that I did attend the Employee Volunteer Dinner, which is always a, a highlight of the year, and also thank the, the staff that worked on that, and also thank all the volunteers that do contribute so much of their time to the city. I also want to welcome my colleague back, Mr. Lives, it's good to see you back, and I'm also glad to be back myself, so that would conclude my report.
Any questions for Councilwoman Herbie? Hearing none, Councilwoman Herbie, I have one item on the agenda for the 14th, that's the Otters Report, DeCosimo's. You have anything to add? Next report is General Governmental Relations and, and Community Committee, that's my, my committee, I have nothing to report. I'll answer any questions if there are any. Hearing none, we go to item number six, the Mayor's Report. Just briefly, two things. One, I too would like to thank the volunteers and employees who put together and those who attended the employee dinner. I would also like to thank those members of council who was present, and for those who couldn't be. Specifically, Councilwoman Holt did a good job as usual, so thank you, Councilwoman Holt, and everybody else. Secondly, you would have gotten, or should have gotten, a, an email from the Clerk of Council informing you of the homecoming parade that is, would be held on October 24. You need to let Clerk of Council know ASAP if you will be participating, so that we can move forward with, one, responding to the school district, and two, securing a vehicle for council to use. More than likely, we will be using one of the trucks from the Fire Department as we have in the past. So again, make sure that you let her know as soon as possible if you plan on being in that parade. And I would hasten to add that, as usual, we would meet up here to, to board the, the fire truck and go down to this, this school on Waycross. We have to be down there by 5:30 to get in line for the parade. That would end my report, I would answer any questions if there are any. Hearing none, I, we go to item number eight, the City Manager's Report, Mr. Smith.
Couple of comments. First, let, let you all know that the department reports on file in the clerk's office for public inspection. The second thing, I want to just remind you all that also on the 18th of October, that will be also the day for the Fire Department's, I think, of their open house. It's right after the Harvest Park. I'm not sure if they're doing the chili cook-off again or not.
Probably not, since I always win.
I know Jermaine Hill and the Fire Department will, will have those additional details for anyone who may want to compete with their unique chili recipes. He can be reached at 595-5243, and that will conclude my report at this time, thank you.
Any questions for the City Manager? Hearing none, I'm, I'm going to speak with Jermaine to make sure that we do have the chili contest again. I need a three, I need a three-peat, as they say. Okay, then. We move to item number eight, other reports, Clerk of Council, Mrs. Hoffman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to report that ordinance numbers 13-2014 and 14-2014, as well as resolution numbers 28 through 31-2014 were posted as required, and that concludes my report.
Any question for Clerk of Council? Thank you, hearing none. Move to item number nine, New Business, the first item on the New Business is Resolution Number 32-2014. Would the clerk please read that resolution in full?
Resolution Number 32-2014. A resolution authorizing the city manager to file an application with the Ohio Public Works Commission for state capital improvement funds. Whereas street, road, and stormwater improvements are a priority of the City of Forest Park, and whereas the Ohio Revised Code has allowed for the issuance of state capital improvement funds for 2015, round 29, and whereas the District Public Works Integrating Committee of Hamilton County is the recipient of state capital improvement funds and local transportation improvement fund program funds from the Ohio Public Works Commission, and whereas the City of Forest Park will apply for funding under the state capital improvement as part of District 2, Hamilton County, allocation for infrastructure repairs and improvements, now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Forest Park, Ohio. Section 1, that the Council of the City of Forest Park does hereby endorse and support the application for state capital improvement funds for infrastructure repairs and improvements as follows. One, West Sharon Road improvements. Section 2, that the city manager is hereby authorized and directed to file an application with the District Public Works Integrating Committee of Hamilton County for Ohio Public Works Commission funding under state capital improvement for 2015, and if awarded, to implement said program. Section 3, that the city manager is hereby, that the City of Forest Park hereby requests the District Public Works Integrating Committee and the Ohio Public Works Commission to consider to fund and fund this application. Section 4, this resolution shall be in full force and take effect upon its passage.
Okay, is there a motion, Mr. Southall?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I offer a motion that Resolution Number 32-2, 2014 be received for adoption.
Second.
Then moved in second that we adopt Resolution 32-2014. Is there any discussion, Mr. Southall?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, this ordinance is pretty straightforward and has to deal with the, was primarily with the West Sharon Road improvements, and I offer, urge adoption of the Resolution 32-214.
Is there any further discussion under motion? Hearing none, with the clerk, Haller Rose, most, the role on Resolution Number 32-2014.
Cottle?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lives?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Uh, Resolution 32-2014 passes 7-0. Next item on the agenda, item B, Resolution 33-2014. Would the clerk please read that resolution by title only?
Resolution Number 33-2014. A resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. Whereas the Council of the City of Forest Park, Ohio, in accordance with Ohio Revised Code, Section 5705.34, and all the other provisions of law, has previously adopted the tax budget for the next succeeding fiscal year commencing January 1st, 2015. And whereas the Budget Commission of Hamilton County, Ohio, has certified its action thereon to this council, council, and what part thereof is without, and what part within, the 10-mil limitations therefore be it, now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Forest Park, Hamilton County, Ohio. Section 1, that the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission in its certification be and the same or hereby accepted. Section 2, that there be and is hereby levied on the tax duplicate of said city the rate of each tax necessary to be levied within and without the 10-mil limitation as contained as Exhibit A, attached hereto and made a part of this resolution. Section 3, this resolution shall be in full force and take effect from and after its passage.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I move adoption of Resolution Number 33-2014.
Second.
Then moved in second that we adopt Resolution 33-2014. Is there a discussion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, as indicated in the work session before this, this is part of our annual budget process. A tax budget is submitted to the county, and the county, based on our tax budget, determines the tax rates, and those have been sent back to us, and we have to concur in, in, in those tax rates, and I would urge adoption of the resolution.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, with the clerk, Haller Rose, on Resolution 33-2014.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lives?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Cottle?
Yes.
Resolution 33-2014 passes 7-0. The next item on the agenda is Item E, a motion, Councilwoman Cottle.
I move to direct the Clerk of Council to notify the Ohio Department of Liquor Control that the City of Forest Park does not request a hearing regarding a liquor license request for Aldi's Incorporated, Ohio, 1135 West Kemper Road. for Aldi's Incorporated, Ohio, 1135 West Kemper Road, Forest Park, Ohio, 45240.
Second.
Been moved in second that we adopt the motion to not request a hearing on a request for this liquor license for Aldi's. Is there any discussion?
Um, yes, we've received the notice from the state of a request for Aldi's for a C1 liquor license, beer only in original sealed containers for carryout only, and a C2 liquor license, wine in certain prepackaged mixed drinks in sealed containers for carryout. This was also reviewed by the police department, and they find no reason to object to the request.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, let it be known by the sign of voting aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Is there any other business to come before the body? Any other business to be come before the body? Hearing none.